Twenty-four, Greenup City Council meeting to order a roll call.
Mark Harris?
Here.
Steve Brennan? John Norman?
Here.
Bruce Vance?
Here.
Jretha Hill?
Here.
Jamie Gil.
We'll go to the audience first, Brian Grooves.
Yeah, I just wanted to introduce myself, come down, I'm representing paving solutions, I'm the project manager. We're looking to move in, we're out of Huntington, we cover about a two-hundred mile radius outside of Huntington. We're looking to move down the river and expand our business down into Dan County and on, keep on going, but uh, just uh, got to tell you a little bit what we do, we do all um, street scape work, we do paving, sealing, striping, any of that kind of stuff that the city may need, we can help you all and um, and one of the biggest points I want to hit on that kind of hit, make sense for city governments and that kind of thing is when we do pave, we do good dealings with us, so we tie in all of our two-inch caps, because anybody can come in and weigh a two-inch cap, but we do all the tying, so you have snow removal and that kind of thing, you end up coming in busting a brand-new fifty thousand dollar project or whatever, that you did, so um, I think Mayor said the bids are coming out tonight, so um, just wanted to kind of stop in, introduce myself and who we are and what we're about, and like I said, I'm the project manager, so any paving, any prep work, I'm on site for the job to ensure that it's done to spec and that the city's happy.
Good deal.
You got a card with you?
Yes.
We have one.
Yeah.
What, you just asked me there?
I was, yeah, I was, actually, yeah. We have, yeah, thanks a lot, perfect.
Thank you, buddy.
Did you say your age is Ryan?
You paid a little bit for these business cards, Brian.
Yeah, I was about to say, you might want that back, I mean.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
You don't tackle pickleball courts, do you?
We do, we did uh, the Country Club Pickleball Courts ad, yeah, I do.
Let me ask you this, what if I've already got the concrete poured, do you all tackle them as far as painting and all that stuff?
Yeah, we actually, we get a company to come in to help us with that, we do, we work with a company, a sports complex, I think.
Is that company out of Lexington, Louisville?
Yeah, it's Louisville, I think, um, it's a specialized company.
Yeah, I've already been in touch with them.
But it's uh, it's good, they're good and it's good stuff.
They're very expensive, though.
Very expensive.
I had a couple of people that I was just going to use just to paint it over there, because it's already laid out in concrete, and had a couple of people hired and they've all backed out.
Now, we can do the painting part of it, if you.
I've already got stencils and everything.
I mean, if you want to do the painting, we've, we've got all that kind of paint that, that you need for that kind of stuff, we can put it out and paint it, or memo, of what it costs to truly put that, I think it's a three-layered process.
Yes.
And all of that, it's very minimal to me.
Because that company out of Lexington or Louisville, man, they wanted an astronomical.
We've worked with them a few times, I mean, we give a little bit of a break, but it's still.
Yeah, I can understand if we had six, seven, eight courts, you know, we was building a big complex, but man.
Yeah, and we supply the man right now with pickleball, I'm sure.
It's, I've had people over here already, they take chalk out and draw their own lines and been playing all winter long.
Yeah, so it's, it's crazy, the, the supply or the demand of it, and that's why they put prices this way.
They're skyrocketing.
But, it seems like they can come down, sit down and see what you want.
I'll be in touch with you tomorrow. Awesome. David Butt?
I'm group in the party situation again.
Your what situation?
Party.
I thought you said parties for a second.
I was like, I don't, okay.
I've got it on the agenda, and I was hoping to follow up with Jay Sizmore, because I told you that I'd have to invite him to the meeting. I honestly forgot to give him a buzz, so, and he's not here, he probably didn't remember because we didn't have a January meeting. But um, I can get back in touch with him, or I'll also ask him about if you, if he wants you to come to a fair board meeting, and I can call you and let you know. Make myself a note.
You guys are raising the roll, I understand, you're raising the win next year, or this year, or whenever?
Um, it took a small increase in January, if I remember right, and that was the ordinance that maybe you passed whenever you was on council, I can't remember.
No.
Uh, when we passed that ordinance?
I think it was his fault.
It was late last year.
Yeah, it was his turn.
Okay, um, it took a small increase in January, and then I think it takes another one like in two years maybe, but I'd have to pull the ordinance to see it.
I was thinking two years.
Yeah.
Okay, and the next one is when, next year, this year?
Two years.
Two years.
Two years.
Okay, the question is, we're getting increases, but yet, the new infrastructure, you're tying in for a ten-year flat rate, how's that gonna work?
What new infrastructure?
The one you run down to, um.
Salome? Salome?
Yeah.
What about?
Well, see, they're locked there for ten years at the same rate, so why are we paying for their water?
We, well, for one, the county, that, that whole entire project, we had zero money tied into.
But we will have one drawn water down there, because our water were running down it, it's not the county's water.
But it's going to be more or less free money to us for letting the county run those water lines down there. I mean, that was a two million dollar project, supply about eighty homes, I think we've got sixty signed up now.
So who's paying for the water itself?
To be produced?
Yeah.
We are.
So how can we produce water that cheap and give it to them at that price, when our bill keeps going up?
Because the county paid the, for the infrastructure down there, we don't have no more.
Don't pay for the water, we still got to buy the Kimball stuff to make the water in.
But they were still making profit on, huge, huge amounts of profit.
Well, if we make that profit, why is ours going up?
Because the city council passed an ordinance.
So, when did they pass, so we're just making a flat rate down there, city council, when did they pass that one?
That wasn't, that was tied in with the county on the deal of the project.
You can't tie the city stuff in with the county stuff, they pay for all that work, I understand that, but we're supplying all the water.
Correct.
So, so there is no tie-in there.
I, I mean, I don't have an answer.
So, mine went up fourteen, sixteen dollars in January.
How much?
Huh?
How much?
About fourteen to sixteen dollars.
In January?
Well, the last, I got to build house right now, yeah, so it'd be a February bill, I guess, one bills. But yet, mine went up, and there's a flat rate for ten years, and mine will go up twice within two years. I just uh, that's hard to justify, boys and girls.
I mean, you're going to have to talk to the city council as well, I mean, I don't have an, an answer for you, other than.
You're out here, that's going to be you, so I'm talking to the city council, how do we do this?
Well, it's just something we're going to have to get together and discuss, because off the top of my head, I can't uh, figure it out right this moment.
Well.
What the right thing is to do.
Well, let me correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but whenever you go into a major project and you take on a large amount of customers like we are, and that's a pretty large amount, sixty, eighty people, when you present that project in front of them, at the time that you do that with the county's backing, with what we had, the deal we had with the county, I would say that that was built in to the project originally.
When was that ever discussed, what was built into the project?
Oh, months and months and months ago.
Now, months and months and months ago, I was on the council, it wasn't built in, so it wasn't months and months and months ago. I mean, this paper right here I got.
But that'd be, that was something that they had through the council, I mean, through the.
But it says ten years at the same price.
County, and not the city part of it.
This paper right here.
I'll have to look into it, but I'm pretty sure it's.
So, I can't see why I'm paying extra dollars if somebody's getting off scot-free, regardless of what kind of frauds you do.
And here's what it boils down to, is, is that, and eventually, it's going to be talked about, but as you are fully aware, because you served on city council, our water plant's forty-seven years old, it's seen its life. We've been running off floating intakes, uh, temporary floating intakes for, what, twenty years now, Bruce, maybe twenty-five, thirty years? It's ready to fail at any point in time. If we don't do something with our water plant and water intakes, one of these days it's going to fail, and it's coming sooner than later. We, as a body, have got some very tough decisions to make over the next couple of years. That is going to be very challenging and tough decisions for the, our constituents and all of Greenup County. Because it is, the prices have quadrupled, more or less, in material, labor, and everything.
That's true.
And that's just what we're faced with, I mean, that's what it is.
But while we're making these choices, spending more money, these people is getting at the same price, regardless what we do. And ours will have to go up to do this, there's no, no doubt about that, we've got to raise everything to do this. But when you get somebody ten years of a fixed rate, and then two, it goes too high, they'll just get portion, the water from Portman like they was doing. And we're still left holding back.
Well, I see, well, that makes sense to me, what you're saying.
So, I just want to spank him, I mean.
Well, that says we, we, we can look into it and get back with you.
I may be wrong in this, but it looks to me like the whole thing, this right here is from the county, you know, the county is the one.
But the county don't make the water.
Right, right, that, that, that actually is the one that made this ten-year infrastructure.
But if you say, it says the city and county, it says the city too, so you're not getting off to, by bringing on the county.
No, 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 I'm just trying, I'm just reading this real quick, I'm just reading down through here real quick. But the initial thing, it looks like it was made from the county, by the county, for the rate, as far as the rate goes.
So how the county give water rates when they don't have a water system?
It was talked about months and months ago, I don't know exactly when, but it's when they were front of the money, that they would be locked in at that rate, I don't remember when we talked about it, but.
Well, like I said, you're talking about ten years, right, they had a fixed rate, okay, it's, what, thirty-four, forty-two for ten years? What happens if they go over the minimum, there's no top, there's no top value there, so basically, they can use all the water they want to use, and still pay them in bill. Because the way that's rolled up, there is nothing but the minimum rate.
Well, y'all says the minimum rate, rate is thirty-four, twenty-two.
Uh-huh.
So, and then it says two thousand gallons, so I would say, if it was over two thousand gallons, and that would not be considered the minimum.
They charge more.
Well, if, but how do those people know what they're going to be paying if it's not in paper?
It's in our ordinance.
It's in our city ordinance, but you changed everything when you took this infrastructure, you changed everything. Yes, you did. There, that paper don't tell you everything, it just tells you one part of it. So, all that tells those people down there, they can pay at three, forty-two.
Unless they go over the minimum.
Huh?
Unless they go over the minimum.
What is if they go over the minimum?
Well, it's structured with what we have to, what we all, we all pay.
Okay, why is that in paper? Why is that not in the paper right there, to let everybody know what they're going to pay when it goes over there?
Well, it says for a minimum water bill of two thousand, thirty-four.
But it stops right there, it stops.
Yeah, well, most people will assume that if they have over two thousand gallons, they're going to pay more money.
The whole thing is, they get what, they get water cheaper than Portman, so you put them on that minimum right there. Because Portman water was cheaper than our water.
Well, that is their minimum, yeah, but once they, and, and once they increase by more than two thousand gallons, then they're going to start paying the rate we pay.
Well, they don't know that, because I've talked to them.
You mean they think they're going to pay thirty-four, twenty-two regardless of the amount of water?
That's right.
That doesn't sound.
That doesn't make sense, Dave.
Well, who wrote this up?
Well, it looks like a, part of it has, has been omitted.
Yeah, that's right. Why?
But, but that doesn't mean that it's set in stone that all they're going to ever pay is thirty, I don't see that, I can't believe that, can you?
Well, yeah, I can, I surely can.
Regardless of how much they use, they still only pay thirty-four, twenty-two?
Usually, when something's rolled up, it tells them what the minimum is, and if they go over, it's, but it's not in there.
I think they left it out, then, by mistake.
You don't make mistakes like that, John, you're a, you're a businessman, you don't make mistakes like that.
I know, but, but that doesn't even make sense, does it?
No, well, it does too, if you want that, what people just does. Because they was getting the water, Portman, they said we get cheaper Portman, they won't get it here.
But you say some people that are affected by this have told you that that's all they pay regardless of how much they use, you've talked to somebody?
That's what they think, I've talked to people south shore, yeah.
Well, now, that, that price is just for two thousand gallons.
Okay, where's the rest of it at then?
Well, I assume they would figure that they would fall under our.
Businesses don't. Businesses don't assume, they got a, a ceiling they go by.
Yeah.
They don't assume.
Stephen, do you have any input in that about?
Yeah, they're going to pay more if they go over the minimum bill, and, and with all due respect to you, I don't see how anyone could look at that any other way. Like, everyone knows you pay for waters you go.
All due respect, why we get them a, that price anyways?
Well, I think that question's been answered for you, but you don't like the answer, is that we now have eighty customers, new customers, and we have.
Now, you got sixty, you said, you don't have that.
Well, maybe we have thirty, maybe we have, I don't know, right, okay.
So, okay, let's go, let's talk about what we got.
Well, I don't know what you got, what I know, what I know is, is that it's a, it's a money-making thing that, it, it is that it makes, and by adding more customers, you end up reducing the rate that you have to pay, because the more water we make, the cheaper it costs to make it, so what your complaint is, is really that these people get some little inconsequential break on their water bill that you're not, when we actually, since we're all talking about it, charge everyone else in the county a lot more than we charge in city rates, right? A lot more, including extra fees, which they also complain about. And I think that you're, honestly, if you actually drilled down on the numbers, you would find that your water bill's going to be less over time by adding these customers and that many more that can now go down there, because what you're discounting when you think about it, if you really, if you really think about it, having city water down there opens that up to a lot more development, a lot more people. And the more customers we add, the bigger we become, and the bigger we become, the more likely we are to not have to start buying water from Ashland. And if you want to talk about a big water bill, go ask any one of your friends at Flatwoods what Ashland charges for its water.
And you're, you know, you're talking about all this water, we don't hardly, for years, we said we don't have enough water to hardly supply us, now we're taking on customers, now how are we doing that, how, where are we getting this extra water from?
Well, we're making it.
Water plant will only make so much water.
Okay, so I think I talked to you, I was on council about that, and you said, we just cannot make this water, we got to buy it from Ashland to keep up what we're doing.
No, we can't break down.
No, I've never said that, I've said that, I've said that, hold on, let me speak. In times of crises, whenever we have a problem, and that's when we can shut one side of our system down and buy from Cannonsburg, which Ashland supplies. Anytime we have a bad leak, or an emergency, or a power outage, we're thankful to be able to have that interconnection with Cannonsburg. If not, we'd have people without water all the time, but as of right now, we can produce enough water to supply sixty more homes. We, we sell taps every day, are we getting to capacity? Yes, very slowly. But more importantly, more importantly than capacity, is the aging of our infrastructure. I could give, I don't care about customers at this point in time, you guys shouldn't care about customers at this point in time. Because one day, we're going to wake up in the city of Greenup, and we ain't going to have no damn water, because our water plant's going to be down.
That's any water plant, any place.
No, it's not any water plant in any place, go look at the city of Ashland, they're not in that shape, go look at, go.
They don't say there's no water plant.
Go look at Rattlesnake Ridge, they're not in that shape.
That's a newer place too.
Exactly, they've put money back for their infrastructure, where we haven't over the last fifty or sixty years. And we're running on borrowed time and have been, one of these days, I'm telling you, and I told you when you sat on city council, one of these days, I'm going to get a phone call in the middle of the night that says, we're down, I can't get you back up, it's that plain and simple. And we're not going to have any water, now thankfully, everybody that, inside the city of Greenup will have a trickle, and everybody out Route One, that's fed off a Cherokee tank and the Argot tank, they're going to have water, because they, we can buy it from Cannonsburg, but everybody that lives out in the load area, out of Co Branch, down in Lloyd, down South Shore, down Salome, everybody on the western end of Greenup County, guess what, they're not going to have any water when our plant goes down.
So my next question is, why we taking on three customers if they're such a irony?
What does more customers bring in, Dave?
I don't know.
Revenue.
Not at that price it didn't, because we cost you that to do it.
Sure it was. We had, we had free money from the county, two million dollars of free money.
To put the infrastructure in, yes.
To put it in.
Okay.
Only thing we got to do is produce the water and sell it.
That's right, but our water plant's so desperate, we don't know about the water.
Our water plant can keep up with the capacity, it's not a capacity issue at this point in time, it's an age. And if it goes down, everybody's down, except for those people out there that we can buy water off of in Cannonsburg. Look at the blue line that's laying from the little sandy river up to the water plant right now, that's been sitting in the sun and baking for twenty-five or thirty years, that comes from our floating intake, that's just sitting outside. Look at the cable that runs, and I've asked you all to go over there numerous times, look at the cable, the electric line that stretched from the pump house all the way down to the uh, floating intake, that's laying on the ground for the last twenty-five or thirty years, that occasionally we have to replace because uh, squirrels eating into it, rodents eating into it, that's about seventy-five hundred dollars worth of cable laying there, electric line, that's just laying on the ground.
I think the guys on the council, we talked about getting that other intake too, and you held off because you wanted to get the, the water plant first.
Without the intake, you have no water plant.
No, no, no.
And I've said that for years.
Well, that's true, but we wanted to get that one for five hundred thousand there, a couple of years ago.
There's no intake that's ever been five hundred thousand dollars.
What's this?
I have no idea what you're talking about for five hundred thousand dollars.
Anyways, we was going to get that intake, you had two models, you had a thing to operate itself up and down, and then you had the one standing. Mark, you was on there, you may not remember, but you were saying, let's hold off till we get the new water plant. Correct, so we can't talk about this little floating intake, that's, that was our job to remove that thing uh, four years ago. Because you want this intake down where the new water plant was going to run up the side of the highway to the new plant, and you said, we're not going to get that till we get the water plant itself.
Without a new intake, you have no water plant, intake has to be first, always has been, always will be.
How they brought that four years ago?
And we still don't have either.
So, why, why, why do we have it?
It's very simple, you'll find out here in just a little bit, whenever we get down to Richard Harrington's update, Richard, how much was the intake bid, let's just go to it right now.
Uh, the bid came in last week at fourteen point nine million dollars.
So there's the reason.
Now, how it was four years ago? That was four years ago, Richard?
In, oh, not four years ago, twenty seventeen, Richard.
Uh, well, we don't know, we've never bid it back then, so.
But, we, we had construction.
Maybe five million?
Okay, five million, I'm sorry, five million, but that's a hell lot there in fourteen point whatever.
And you, I, or nobody else can do anything about that, COVID hit, prices skyrocketed, and here we sit it once again. With the same exact issues that we had in twenty seventeen, and now we have them in twenty twenty-four. The only difference is, it was five million then, at an estimated construction cost, never bid out, but now it's been bid out at fourteen point nine million, maybe fif- might as well say fifteen million. How can the city of Greenup ever come up with fifteen million dollars? Now, hold on, let's go a step further, if the water, if the intakes has come in at fourteen point nine million. And we estimated construction costs for the new water plant at fifteen million dollars, guess what? Your water plant now is about thirty, thirty-five million. So, now we're looking at fifty million dollars.
So, how are we ever going to afford it?
Exactly, and we'll be talking about that a little bit later. But there's gonna come a time and day that I've told you when you sat on council, and I've told every council since twenty ten. Since twenty ten, I've told every city council, that unless we take action on our water plant. We're gonna end up the same way we were with our circle, that's what's gonna happen.
How long did it take us to finally get approved for the water plant, or did we ever?
Yeah, we've been approved for it, matter of fact, we're coming up on the two-year.
Two-year, two-year.
In April?
Kind of the end of April, you'll have to resubmit.
You don't want to submit, four to five years before that?
No, it didn't take us to get D O W approval.
Probably four years.
Four years.
Well, like you said, you keep it in an obstacle house, or what, what are you gonna do?
That's a good question, what are we gonna do?
You're the mayor, you're the mayor of this council, what are you gonna do?
You sat on city council whenever I asked those questions, Dave, what are we gonna do?
Yes. Yes, sir.
We didn't have an answer then, I don't have an answer now.
I had an answer about that intake, you said, oh, we can wait till we get the, the new, uh, water plant.
Here we are, we're faced with it now, these six people and myself, and, and the twelve hundred and fifty people that live inside this town. And the people that we represent because we supply them water. They're all faced with it, we're all faced with it, and it's one hell of a problem to have, trust me. I dread the night that I get the phone call that says, hey, I got you down, you ain't coming back up, cause it's gonna happen. I've had the phone call too many times that I've had contractors over in the middle of the night, been standing right over there with them, it's gonna happen.
We're gonna die one of these days too, it's gonna happen, you know?
I hope you don't, I hope you live a long, generous life.
I think we're killing you, living round.
But we're gonna move on. The, uh, building inspection ordinance, I've talked to Stephen about it, and, uh, he needs a little bit more time, correct?
I'm gonna get you all one, I'll send it to Lacy, and she'll send it to you all, so we can look at it, talk about it next time.
We've already discussed the fairgrounds, uh, the next item on the agenda is to set fireworks.
That's on a Thursday. The fourth of July this year, I was looking at it, right?
It is, but he will not do the fourth, he, he, he saves that date for his family.
What do you think, the fifth?
I would say the fifth.
All right.
To keep it off of, uh, that'd be my recommendation, that keeps it off of church night on Wednesday.
Yeah.
And I just think the fifth is a better fit.
Well, it's, it's just as good as any other day, I, I make a motion that we set up fireworks for the fifth.
I'll see.
Have a motion and a second on the floor to set the, uh, July fireworks for July fifth. Is there any discussion? Roca.
Bruce Mance?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Dorit the Hill?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is to set spring cleanup. Um, and I spoke with her, and just about every date is open as of right now, so it's totally up to you guys.
Does anyone remember when last year's was?
Sometime in April, wasn't it?
Sometimes it's kinda good to kinda keep it the same.
Yeah.
So, people will know when to expect it.
Some reason I was thinking.
Last year was the second weekend of April.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll make a motion that we keep that the second weekend.
Have a motion on the floor, John seconds it. Is there any discussion? Roca.
Dorit the Hill?
Uh, yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Bruce Mance?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda will be advertised for bids by blacktop by the ton lead. Um, the only thing that I will add in there is, uh, and this might be a good question to ask you, would be acceptable for, uh. Any blacktopping company to have a, uh, ninety-day, um.
Ninety-day net?
Yep. Have a ninety-day net on that. That way it gets us into springtime. Is there a motion to advertise for bids?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roca.
Bruce Mance?
Yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dorit the Hill?
And then I forgot to add a, a thing or two on the agenda, and I was going back through the old agenda. And we need to do this probably at the next council meeting, is Bill Vaughn was here back in November, I think it was. Maybe even been October, about that little portion of the Elizabeth Street down there. Um, that he wants like to be seen closed, it runs, remember where the houseboat used to sit at?
Yeah.
Elizabeth Street runs right on down towards the river, and he just wants that like hundred and fifty foot of Elizabeth Street closed, I mean, I'm sure Richard wouldn't care to pull it up on the. On the survey stuff, and, um, I think we can have a first reading of that, council?
We can, yeah.
Well, how about at the, um, regular meeting for you girls? And I wanted to let you guys know that we tore down the, um, I call it the old house down on West Main Street, I don't know if you guys have seen that as well. Uh, we are, uh, in litigation, well, not necessarily litigation, but we've, um. Filed some paperwork on the, uh, one up on here on East Main Street. And then we're getting ready to, Stephen doesn't know about this one yet, but I'm gonna send, uh, Steve Ward, as soon as he gets better with COVID, I'm gonna send him over to Winterford Street. To where Ms. Black used to live, I don't know the address yet, I think it's right across from you, and we'll start the process on that house.
And we've got one on East Main Street, we have filed suit on it.
Yes.
Just trying to get all the parties, there's a bunch of lien holders on it that I'm trying to get, that we're getting served.
Yeah.
So, you should expect that comes down, absent the fixment, uh, probably within the next, uh, I'd say three months.
Good deal, and then we'll go ahead and get the one on Winterford Street started as well, and then we'll reevaluate. Spring, early summer, if we've got the money to do anymore, so. And before Richard gives his report, um, request a, um. A motion from one of you guys to go into executive session on, uh, possible litigation.
I'll take it.
I'll take it.
Have a motion on a s- a second on the floor, all in favor, say aye. We shall return.
What do you think you're sitting far with the fifth on the trend?
Correct.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, is there a roll call?
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dorothy Hill?
Yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Bruce Mance?
Yes.
Just let the minutes reflect, there was no action taken at executive session. Richard Howard, an update.
Uh, as we mentioned earlier, we did have an intake bid, one contractor, eighteen point nine something million dollars. That bid is good for a hundred and twenty days, so we have that long, so we can make a decision whether to award it or reject it. So at that, at that point, we also talked about looking at possibly trying to find some ways to do some cost savings on the intake projects. We'll look at that here in the meantime, so whatever. And then the other option, other thing I wanted to bring before you is, we hope to be getting approval for the nine A project. That's all grant that came out of the pot of funds specifically for line extensions. In light of that, we're looking to get a motion to advertise, uh, participation to that statement.
I'll make a motion to advertise for the line extensions.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, on the floor, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Bruce Mance?
Yes.
John Norman?
Yes.
Mark Harris?
Yes.
Dorothy Hill?
Yes.
And I'm available to answer any questions I can.
Richard, I think we'll have to, um, as you and I talk, help me if my memory's wrong, but we'll have to resubmit our plans back to the D O W on the water plant and the intake 'cause the two-year deadline's approaching on both of those, is that correct?
That's true.
So we'll have to resubmit those plans again. Hopefully, you know, barring no issues, D O W just puts their stamp on it and approves it again. But again, we're gonna have to go through that process again, so.
We'll take care of it.
Oh, there was one other thing, uh, someone had asked me about, and I told him that I would bring that up. Is there any, um, you guys like the six o'clock start time, or do you guys want to make it earlier in the day? What do y'all want to do? I had somebody ask me about starting earlier in the day than six o'clock. Obviously, if you do it, it'd be, take a two reading ordinance to change the start time of the, of the, um, meeting. Or if you want to change days, or whatever.
Well, it worked out well when I worked, at six o'clock, I barely made it, but I was here.
You guys happy with it?
I don't have any problem with that.
I just thought I might would ask. So, that's all that I have, someone wants to make a motion to adjourn?
Can I make it?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.